All right, good evening, everybody. I would like to call the regular meetings of the Public Finance Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor, Successor Agency, and City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, before I call roll call, I would like to announce that Councilmember Sarno is physically not here. However, he'll be observing via Zoom.
Thank you.
With that said, Councilmember Sarno, absent. Councilmember Trujillo? Councilmembers Zamora?
Here.
Mayor Proctor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Mora?
Here. Thank you. I'd like to call upon Councilmember Trujillo to give the invocation. Thank you. I'd like to call upon Maya Garcia from the Youth Leadership Committee to get the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Maya, would you please state what grade you're in and what school you're attending?
Hi, I'm Maya. I'm a senior.
All right. Thank you, Maya. Appreciate it. Okay, public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have the opportunity. Once the clerk announces your name, you will have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do we have any members of the audience that wish to speak?
Mr. Mayor, currently, we have three members that are wishing to speak. Two of them are in person, and one of them is via Zoom. I'll be announcing the first two in person. First one is Letizia Vazquez Wilson.
Hey.
Good evening. My name is Letizia Vazquez Wilson. I am one of seven members of the Central Basin Board of Directors, and I'm here to speak again and want to make sure that you all get a copy of the frivolous, my response to the frivolous lawsuit that has been filed against me and supported by your Public Works Director, Mr. Noah Negretti, who serves as your appointed representative on the Central Basin Board. This lawsuit is a part of a pattern and practice of harassment and retaliation by your Public Works Director, Mr. Noah Negretti, who currently serves as the Vice President of our board. Mr. Negretti is working in collaboration with Director Arturo Chacon, who is convicted of seven, has seven criminal convictions on our board. Mr. Bamba Odaka, who is a known sexual harasser. Central Basin paid over $750,000 settlement for a sexual harassment claim made against him by our board. He's also working with Director Phil Hawkins and Mr. Mike Gulteri, who serves as the Director for the Pervayers on the Central Basin Board. I want to give you some examples of the continued harassment and retaliation that I've had to endure as a member of the Central Basin Board. I was recently assaulted by, physically assaulted by one of our directors. You can actually Google the video. It's been posted on YouTube. It's entitled "Downy Assistant City Manager Instigates Assault Against Board Member." This physical assault occurred during our board meeting at Central Basin. And interestingly, according to our attorneys, there was an investigation that was done. There were approximately 15 people that were, attended that board meeting. I was not, I was never interviewed for, during that investigation, and neither were any of the witnesses. Yet, the attorney, with the support of the five other abusers on our board, issued a letter that stated that there was no problem with the physical assault that occurred. And as, again, I urge you to watch the video. It's on YouTube. I'm constantly being muted during our board meetings. We are not having in-person meetings. I'm not allowed to speak during our board meetings. I'm also not allowed to ask questions. These are my duties as an elected official. You know, I am responsible for all of, for ensuring that I have the necessary information that I need to carry out my duties as an elected official. Unfortunately, I don't have time to continue giving you the examples of the retaliation and harassment that I've had to endure, which Mr. Negretti is a part of. But I will say that I will make a record of it. I will send it to you, Mr. Mayor, and through the city clerk.
Okay.
And I'm asking that you take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next, we have Ron Wilson.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Okay, you know about the lawsuit where they're trying to stop her First Amendment right to free speech? And Negretti's part of that. He votes for it. He encourages it. And he's your agent. He's your Public Works Director. There's going to be personal liability when we finally finish it. As I told you last time, two different judges have heard this, and they threw it out. I think after we spoke to the city manager, said, oh, there are two sides to every story. Well, you know what? Their side is she violated the administrative code. She didn't. The judges went through each section of the administrative code. There is no violation of the administrative code. All the administrative code says you can't use a letterhead for public, excuse me, for private profit or political purposes. And she didn't do that, and the judges know it, and that's why they threw it out. They also claimed that she posted something on the internet. She didn't. The guy who actually posted it signed a declaration and filed with the court, and the judges know that. And they also claim that she speaks for the entire board. Another blatant lie. That's why two different judges, on two different occasions, threw it out. And the whole thing will be thrown out. Now, there's a thing called conspiracy. And when people are involved in a conspiracy, even though they don't actively get involved, they incur liability. So if a friend comes to me and says, let me use your car. I want to go rob a bank. And I say, okay, here, take my car. Go rob the bank. And that happens. Guess what? I'm on the hook for robbing the bank, too. You guys now know what Negretti's doing. Before, you could say you didn't know. You know what he's doing. He's engaged in a frivolous lawsuit. He's your agent. I implore you to talk to your own city attorney. They may not admit it in public, but in private, they'll tell you. So you guys are now placed on notice that Negretti, your agent, works for you guys. Abusive process is what it's called. Malicious prosecution is what it's called. Conspiracy to violate her civil rights and to stop her from speaking. This is what's happening. All of you have been placed on notice. You have an obligation to counsel the man or to get an opinion that what they're saying is correct, because it's not. And you might wonder why two judges would just throw it out immediately when they claim she's using it. So they're abusing the public funds. You can't use the public funds to do a personal vendetta. That's what they're doing. Apadaca, the $700,000 sexual harassment. He has another claim over downtown at the Met. And, oh, Chacon. That guy has seven different criminal convictions. I've seen them myself. And he lied to the judges and impersonated his brother on one of them? Believe me, you guys have personal liability. I would suggest and implore you to talk to your own attorneys. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our speakers in person. We have one in via Zoom. Irma Witron?
Hello? Irma, are you there?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Santa Fe Springs. I live on Lake Center Park Lane. Speaking tonight on the land use item that's been, we've commented before during public comments. Make it brief, since I only have a couple of minutes. First, we attended, a few of us attended and have, are going to be watching the Zoom meeting for the Planning Commission, are keeping track of the general plan updates that occurred last night at Traffic Safety Commission. And we understand this also will be a presentation before the City Council in an upcoming meeting to get to the general plan update next year. So thank you for scheduling those. That's something that we've been asking for, is to be kept in the loop on what is going on with the general plan update. We respectfully ask that the Florence Avenue Townhome Project, project site be re-designated from the proposed land use designation of medium density to low-density residential. We request that that be reconsidered and changed during the draft and review process that is undergoing right now. We also ask in regards to the Florence Avenue Townhome Project that the residents be given an opportunity to meet not only with the developer, which the developer is reaching out to residents to meet, but that also include the Planning Department, specifically, and ideally, the Planning Director, to be part of that meeting with the residents. As the residents, we do not feel it's our duty to negotiate any aspects of the project directly with the developer. This is a general plan designation issue that will ultimately be before the City Council. And we ask that this, residents not be put in the position of negotiating a land use item with the developer. We believe that is the duty of the City Council, and that starts with the Planning Department. So we ask that the Planning Director and the planning staff be involved in that meeting with the developer so that we can have that proper representation from city staff. And lastly, I would like to commend the City of Santa Fe Springs for updating the city website with information regarding Planning Commission and other general plan updates that are going on with the city. I made those similar comments last night at Planning Commission. We think it was a very good effort, and we appreciate that. We appreciate also that the general plan update website has been updated with the summaries of previous general plan meetings. I think that's very important for residents. And I ask that the city continue doing that. And one last comment in regards to public outreach. I request that the Planning Department and the City Council consider other avenues of outreach to residents in regards to the general plan, multilingual literature and Spanish and other outreach methods that don't rely on social media, since we do have folks that don't have access to the Internet and computers. And I also request that outreach be made to other residents of the city besides just, I believe it was just senior centers. I think other apartment owners, other property owners should also be reached out for their comment, not just senior center residents. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment to the previous speaker. There is going to be a community meeting at the developers happening on site. We will have planning staff there. Our director will be there, but it's not his role to have a speaking role in that meeting. That's to hear, show he cares, and will be hearing what the residents state. There is no negotiation that they'll be doing on behalf of the residents. That's going to be the two public meetings that they're going to have with the Planning Commission next month, then ultimately, a meeting with you. And you'll be hearing all the data and testimony. And if there's going to be any concessions, it'll be done during those meetings. Nothing that's planning's doing individually with the developer. So I just want to make that clear in that this meeting this week, that's not the place where our Plan Department will be having discussion to negotiate provisions for the residents, what they want. Thank you.
We respectfully ask for a separate meeting to include the Planning Department and residents.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our speakers.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll now close all the comments and move on to the next item. Item number six, Public Finance Authority Agenda. We have two consent items. Is there a motion for the approval of items 6A and 6B?
I'll move A and B.
My second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, Water Utility Authority Agenda. We have three consent items. Is there a motion for the approval of items 7A through 7C?
I'll move 7A through C.
Second.
Thank you. And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number eight, Housing Successor Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of item number eight?
I'll move. Second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number nine, Successor Agency Agenda. We have one consent item. Do we have a motion for the approval of item number nine?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number 10, City Council Agenda. We have two consent items. Is there a motion for this City Council Consent Agenda?
I'll move. A second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number 11, Fiscal Year 2020 through 2021 Preliminary Year and Review. I'd like to call upon Director of Finance Travis Hickey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Around this time of year, we like to bring a preliminary review of our prior fiscal year-end results. We had some preliminary discussions as part of our budget process. Now, we're in the process of our year-end closing. Our auditors will be on site next week. And so this is a preliminary look at it. We call it preliminary because it hasn't not been subjected to our audit. So these figures will be subject to change based on the results of our audit, but we don't expect them to change significantly, if at all. So consistent with what we've talked about as part of the budget, the, you know, concern going into last year at the start of the pandemic was that we would see a significant drop in revenues. We really didn't see that. On the contrary, our sales tax was actually higher. The, based on our revenue estimates that we had reduced, we had actually come in 14 and a half percent higher overall with our revenues, primarily driven by sales tax at 4.1 million or 15% higher, and our Measure Y transactions tax at 1.7 million or 14% higher. What we really didn't see the full effect of until we got through the closing process was really how much savings we had within the departments. Just because of natural turnover, we might expect maybe on the magnitude of $2 million a year in savings. This year was about 4.5 million or 8.5% less than budget. So on the water side, about 1.7 million higher than anticipated, or 13% expenditures were very close to budget, just 0.3% lower. So might be a little bit hard to read there, but that's just a look at our revenues. Our actual column there in the middle, total of about $69 million, 8.6 million more than our budgeted figures, again, driven largely by our sales tax and transactions tax. We did see a healthy increase in our property tax. Some of that is driven by our successor agency, which can vary from year to year. But overall, we did see a 7% growth in assessed valuation, which was very positive. And we also saw a leveling off of our utility users tax. So we had seen some declines in that revenue. We did see a positive variance of almost half a million dollars or 7.8% over budget with our utility users tax. So overall, given the concerns with the pandemic, was very positive results for our revenues. On the expenditure side, they're summarized here by department. Across the board, every department overall came in under budget. Within each department, there's, there's variances within various accounts, but all told, when rolled up by department or division, every department came in under budget. Again, overall, 8.5% savings on our expenditures, originally budgeted. Over $52 million came in, about $48.3 million there. So all told, we had originally projected about a $3 million surplus. We've talked for a number of years now with Measure Y coming online, and our PERS rates taking a number of years to be fully in place. And as they continue to grow, we expected a surplus for the first few years of Measure Y. Initially, for this year, even with our conservative estimates with the pandemic, we were still looking at a $3 million surplus. With the positive results that I just outlined, we're looking now at a net of $15.4 million surplus. And so consistent with what we've recommended in the past, we're recommending to allocate that $15.4 million, as outlined in the chart there, the largest chunk, $6 million, to our unfunded liability, which represents about 39% of that $15.4 million. Secondly, we'd like to set aside $5 million into our capital improvement program, $2 million into our equipment replacement fund, little over $1 million into our employee benefits fund, which I continue to not really like the name of this fund, because really what this fund is for is the accrued leave liabilities for employees. And so we're trying to set aside the funding equal to accrued leave balances for vacation, sick leave, flex time, those sorts of things, so that when we have employees leave the city or retire, that that money is already set aside. This 1.2 million will be the last step to making that fund fully funded. Then the remaining balance of 1.2 million into our economic contingency reserve. So as a reminder to the council, we have a 40% general fund reserve policy. Our reserve is at the 40%. And so there's not a recommendation to add to that unassigned reserve balance, but to put that remaining 1.2 million into an economic contingency reserve, it'll take that reserve balance to a little bit over $5 million. And that's, if you want to think of as a rainy day fund, if there were a downturn in the economy or we did see a drop in revenues, it would give us a layer of reserves to eat into before we get into our other reserves under the 40% policy. This is just a graphical look at our unfunded liabilities. You've seen this chart before, but this represents our annual payments. The yellow and blue represent the miscellaneous and safety plans. So the numbers at top represent the total, our fiscal year we're currently in, right there in the middle, 21-22. It continues to rise. We can see three or four years down the road, another $3 million plus that will be added to those payments. So with the money we've set aside, it will go a long way to help stabilize and reduce those future payments and on down the road. Shifting to the water fund, positive, again, with revenues, 12.8% over our estimates, $1.6 million higher than our original budget of 12.7 million. We saw both more consumption and the phasing in of our water rates. We knew the water rates would be out there, but again, not knowing what the impact from the pandemic would be, our inability to shut off water accounts for non-payment. So again, we were conservative and pleasantly surprised with the results. Overall variance of 13.1% on revenues. Expenditures were very, very much on line with budget, not as much savings as we saw there, although each division within water were under budget, except for our purchases, which we have the least amount of control over. And when we do see higher consumption, we do expect to have more purchases. And so we see that there is the only kind of line item that exceeded budget. But overall, as a utility, 1.8% under budget. That's just a summary of the revenues and expenditures together. Overall, a half a million dollar surplus, when we had originally projected about a $1.4 million deficit. As in the past, given the capital needs of the water fund, we'd recommend putting that half a million set aside into the CIP reserve for water projects. Looking forward, you know, we continue to have CalPERS challenges with our unfunded liability. We, in terms of our CIPs, you know, this $5 million, along with the 2.8 million we do every year, along with other deposits we've done, have gone a long way to put money aside for CIPs. But we still have no ongoing revenue source dedicated specifically to maintaining and upkeep for our infrastructure and as well as looking at just financial trends. You know, things have been positive. We got through the pandemic thus far better than we could have expected, but the future is still unclear going forward. And so we continue to monitor it through that. So that brings my presentation to an end, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Travis, good job.
Ray, did you send Travis the email that I sent you regards to the pension unfunded liability?
Not yet, but I was going to bring that point up, though, that you, Councilmember Zamora, gave me a vendor that gives pension obligation bonds analysis. I have one, you were working with one. And I was going to bring up the point, you know, this is great news. That's one thing. You know, one thing that you saw, that graph on our pension obligation, that's going to, we do meet our discount rate of 7%. That just went down to 6.8%. As you know, last year, we did not meet that number, and that's going to be, you know, multimillion dollars over the next 20 years. We have a strategy for that. But as the council member just stated, with regards to pension obligation bonds, there seems to be a move amongst cities, thinking that may be the route to deal with long-term problem. We are in a good position that some cities, they will have no choice, but others go for pension obligation bonds. I asked a question at the League of Cities Conference if, you know, is there a concern by CalPERS board and their analysts in the question that they are observing? There is some concern, because it's not a panacea. It doesn't, if it goes great, it goes great. If it goes bad, it goes bad. So, but we want to give this council a full review of that, because I think you're going to be hearing more and more. It's probably been about eight or nine cities in our, in our area that have done them. Travis and I have a little more conservative viewpoint about them, but we want to make sure, we're going to look at the vendor you gave me, council member and others, to give us a quote or a proposal to give us that analysis. But we need to provide that to you, because that has some merit. But there is some downfalls to it. But we want to make sure you see that data, so you can make an informed decision what we want to do with that.
And that's all we want. I mean, just the fact that we have all these neighboring cities, you know, doing it. You know, we just want to make sure that, you know, all council members just have the proper information of what's out there, you know, whether it be this vendor, any type of vendor. But at least we know what they're telling us, so we, you know, we can actually respond back, you know, with the logical answer, just letting them know where we're at. It just makes it a lot easier. So even if Travis has to coach us on certain talking points and, you know, having a CPA background just helps us out, just, you know, we just know that it's out there. You know, I just want to make sure that everybody has the information.
Absolutely. This has been on our radar for about a year. And now it's becoming on everybody's radar. And so, no, this is something that we definitely want to have done and illustrate to the council.
Exactly. Yeah, because they're talking about savings or when, if, if it does have it, like a $54 or $64 million, you know, savings. So it's a lot.
Savings and there can be.
Whatever it is, yeah. It could be, yeah, you're right. So, but when you look at it, it's just, because if people ask us questions, why aren't we doing this? At least we, we can give them the answer why we're not, because that is a large sum of money that people may ask, why aren't you guys doing this?
Sure. You know, in 1999, when, when we were super funded in our pensions, and everybody says, oh, we can up our pensions. We have enough money to do it. And two years later, you know, dot com blew up, and then we had the Great Recession and we're probably are right now. So everybody back then thought, you know, we can do this. We have the revenue, and it fell apart. And I remember my, my county, my city manager at the time was, you know, going against the wave there, saying, we shouldn't do this. It doesn't, it's not going to pencil out in the long term. I just want to make sure we don't do the same thing. I'm not, I'm only going to be here for a few years, but we got to, if this doesn't go right, it could mess up our financial future for the years to come.
Exactly. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, I, you know, I sometimes lack on executive team reports, so I saved a little bit on this topic for that. So I did, this, this was more focused on setting aside the $6 million for this year, but I have some slides a little bit later on in terms of where we're at with that, our overall liability and what this contribution will do going forward. And, I mean, I think Ray covered the bonds really well. And, you know, we have met with a couple of vendors, and, and I've seen what has been presented to other cities. And often, it's sold as, you know, it's like refinancing your house. We're paying 7% to PERS. We can issue bonds for 3%. Sounds like a no-brainer. It's not a no-brainer. If we take $150 million in bonds that we're paying 3% on and drop that into PERS, and now they lose 5% that year, instead of losing 5% of the $100 million in there, we've now lost 5% of $250 million that's in there, and we still owe the bonds at 3%. So it's really a lot more complicated. And when you look at cities that are in a financial that are in a financial crunch, that can't pay these increasing contributions, it becomes like a good option that really that's all they can do. For, for us, where we can manage our liabilities, it, we're not seeing that risk return yet. And the consultants that really we've seen are the ones that are connected to issuing the bonds, really have a financial interest in issuing the bonds. They're independent and what they say is true, but I'm not sure it really highlights the risk that is there, downplays it a little bit. And so we do have some independent consultants who, who I'm working with now, trying to put together some information that I think is more objective and would help the council see both sides of the story. Because, because you're right, it is, I mean, I see it with cities all the time. We're going to save $115 million. You might, you might not. So it's, it's, it's a very complicated scheme. The GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, is our national association for finance officers. They continue to recommend against pension obligation bonds. And so that's a big deal to me. There's a lot of things that are different in the market that make them more attractive. Some of the reasons that they do recommend against them have changed, but the fundamental factor that, at the end of the day, it's just a gamble. And, you know, the lower bond rates are, the less of a gamble it is, but it's still a gamble. And so, so we'll definitely want to come back to the council with more information. But from my perspective, I want to make sure it's truly objective information. So.
Thank you, Travis. Do we have a motion for approval of item number 11?
I'll move.
Thank you. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number 12, development of vehicle miles traveled methodology, award of contract and appropriation of funds. I'd like to call upon Director of Planning, Wayne Morrell.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I am here before you today to request an award of contract and appropriation of funds so that we could have the development of a vehicle miles traveled methodology. You may recall that, and this ties into the general plan, on February the 13th, the city council awarded a contractor, MIG, to embark, to embark on the city's first comprehensive general plan update since 1993. And it may not seem as though it's been this long, but it's actually almost two years since we started upon this process. And the goal is to have a formal adoption by the city council in early 2022. But similarly to what was stated during Mary Bell's and the consultant presentation on organic waste, we have the passage of SB 743, which forever changed how transportation impacts are measured on the sequor in the land use review. So previously since 1970, we've been using vehicle miles traveled. Now with this new legislation, we have to use level of service. And that's quite a, a big difference. So just quickly, in terms of the difference between level of services and vehicle miles travel, vehicle miles travel, excuse me, level of service, for example, measures project vehicle intersection, the level of service of those intersection, while vehicle miles travel looks at the total project vehicle miles generated. So it's not the vehicle idling at the intersection, but it's the total miles travel. Another big distinction is that on the level of service, it increases vehicle capacity, while vehicle miles travel more focused on pedestrian, bicycle transit. So that's a, a big, big difference. Notwithstanding, at the city council meeting on June the 3rd, 2021, the city council authorized me to release a request for a proposal to qualified firm to develop a vehicle miles travel methodology. So on June the 4th, 2021, we sent out an RFP to several firms soliciting proposal to develop this vehicle miles methodology. We did receive proposals from several firms. And then we evaluated those proposal and consistent with the city manager's new protocol that when we evaluate requests for proposal, it does not remain simply between that specific department. We have been requested by the city manager to include other departments in the evaluation of proposals. And that makes it more, I guess you would look at the outcome and note that the final decision was not made specifically within that department, but you had input from other departments. So a committee consisting of two members from the planning department, myself, my senior planner, one member from the Department of Public Works, the city's traffic engineer, and two consultants, one from the consultant firm of Sage Press Planning and Environmental, and the other one from JWA Urban Consultants, review all of the proposals and rank them. And you have that scoring sheet in your package. Based on those criteria, he selected Fairs and Pairs as the best and most qualified company to award the contract. And then numerous reasons why we selected them. I mean, if you look at the literature when it comes to vehicle miles travel, they're the ones that work with the governor office of planning and research. They're the one that has established the various thresholds for numerous cities within the state of California. So they are one of the premier firms doing this type of, of, of work. So today, again, before you requesting that the award of contract be for Fairs and Pairs and in the amount of 75,000. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Good, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval, item number 12?
I'll move, bro.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered, item number 13.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to announce that the Dodgers won 6 to 5.
All right. Thank you. Item number 13, amendment number one to the exclusive negotiating agreement by and between the city of Santa Fe Springs, a California municipal corporation known as a city, and Westland Real Estate Group, a California liability company known as a developer. I'd like to call upon Director of Planning, Wayne Morrell.
Thank you again. And let's go back a little. So on June the 25th, 2020, we entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the Westland Group to develop parcel one of the sculpture garden site. And remember that vision of creating the downtown Santa Fe Springs with the light in the, with the light in the sidewalk, the selfie spot, the roof type restaurants, essentially all of the things that you would look forward to in a downtown. And as part of creating that vision, that's also incorporated into the general plan. So it's not just this ENA itself, but the whole process of creating that downtown Santa Fe Springs is incorporated into the general plan. Notwithstanding, the existing ENA expires in November, and we are requesting a six-month extension. And just to give you an idea as to what has happened so far, we've done an appraisal. So we know the appraised value of the property. We've done a tentative map to essentially subdivide the area that's required for, for the development. We've walked the site with the developer, and we've looked at the area that will be incorporated as part of the development. One of the other items that we need to do is to hire a consultant essentially to give us an analysis of the soil. And we are working on this. So just as a precursor, so that no one is caught unprepared, I will be coming back to you at the next meeting to request more money for that particular purpose. So just so that everybody is prepared. But it is absolutely necessary because once we finalize the soils, we already have all the items that I mentioned, then we could sit down with the developer and negotiate the purchase price and eventually come back before you for a purchase and sales agreement. So that is the overall goal. But today we need that additional six months to really finalize all of these items. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Wayne.
So it's going to happen, huh?
It will happen by hook or crook. It's going to happen.
All right.
Yes.
That's your, your baby right there.
Yes.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval, item number 13?
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Ordered, item number 14, Imperial Highway Complete Street Study Implementation Agreement. I'd like to call upon Director of Public Works, knowing that.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep it a little bit shorter than Wayne. How's that? What you have before you is Imperial Highway Complete Street Study. It's a study. Last year, we did something very similar for Florence Avenue. So we're looking at, in this case, Imperial Avenue, Imperial Highway throughout the Gateway City's corridor. So the cities that are involved in this study are Linwood, Southgate, Downey, Norwalk, ourselves, and La Mirada, with also some parts of the unincorporated LA County. The total cost of this study is just over $219,000. The Gateway City's COG secured a grant in the amount of $160,000. So the difference of that is being paid by those cities that are on Imperial Highway. And how they're prorating that is by distance. So we have just under a mile, linear miles. So you take that into what's the remaining balance, and our shares are whopping $3,755.62. So we are recommending that we move forward with the study, participate in the study, and appropriate the $3,755.62 from the CIP user utility tax fund, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Happy to take questions.
Good job, Noah.
What, I got one quick one, Noah. So this is just going to be a set to see what type of improvements we can make along the entire Imperial Highway corridor between all the cities.
Yes.
Yes.
And then once that is done, are we going to be also liable for only like 0.9 mileage based on the entire, the total construction cost of Imperial?
That's not, that's not known at this point yet. It's just the study. So the study would look at, you know, most people don't know when they go from one city to another, right? I mean, Imperial Highway is one of the major corridors for people that move pedestrians and vehicles. So what they're trying to do is set up so that a common theme, the next step effort to study would be to try to find money to go to design. And if they can secure a grant for that and hopefully do that, and then we would pay the difference, that would be the goal. And then after that, to go build it, right? Go find money to construct it.
Okay. We got to start. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval, item number 14?
My second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered, item number 15, Fitness Core Project at Los Nettos Park. Authorized the purchase of a shade cover, install concrete pad, and award of contract. I'd like to call upon Park and Immigration Services Manager, Gus Hernandez.
About the Dodgers there. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, I bring before you the Fitness Core Project. Once again, you're pretty familiar with it by now. This is to authorize the purchase of a shade cover and to install the concrete pad and award a contract. As you may recall, at the city council meeting on April 20th, city council approved to appropriate monies for the Fitness Core Project at Los Nettos Park. As part of this project, a concrete slab will need to be installed according to the specifications provided by NFC. Two quotes were received by vendors with the lowest bid from advanced concrete specialists. We did receive, or we did solicit quotes from other vendors, and two were unresponsive. This, these quotes do include the cost of the footings that would be necessary for the shade structure. That leads me to the next point. So on September 7th, the CIP Subcommittee held a walkthrough at the Fitness Core Site and directed staff to seek a shade structure to provide relief from the sun while working out. The shade structure is designed and manufactured specifically for the Fitness Core. The footings for the shade structure will be installed at the time that the concrete slab is poured, and according again to the specs provided by both NFC and USA Shade and Fabric Structure. On the bottom of your screen there, you see a rendering of what that shade structure will look like. At the, again, at the city council meeting on April 20th, city council approved to appropriate 266,000 from the UUT. And in order to fund the shade structure, because that was not an original component of this project, we will need an additional appropriation of $23,000 from the UUT from this project. On the right of your screen, if I could direct your attention to the table there, we see the expenditures what our original estimated budget was, and then what the revised budget is. And that includes the cost of the shade structure. So the shade structure is approximately a little over $48,000. However, now that we've gotten true costs of what the equipment is and what the installation is, we were able to revise the budget and include the shade structure with only needing an additional appropriation of $23,000. Also important to note is that the city has now entered into an agreement with the State of California Office of Grants Local Services to receive $188,953 in Prop 68 per capita grant funds to offset the project costs. So including the new proposed appropriation, the grant will cover approximately 66% of the total project costs. Here we see a rendering of what the Fitness Core will look like. It's very vibrant, very sleek, and I think it's going to add a great touch to Los Nettos Park. So tonight, our recommendation is to accept the proposal for installation of a concrete pad to award a contract to advanced concrete specialists in the amount of $44,000. And then at the direction of the CIP Subcommittee to accept the proposal from USA Shade and Fabric Structure for the purchase and installation of a shade structure to appropriate an additional $23,000 from the UUT for this project, and to authorize the Director of Purchasing to authorize a PO in the amount of $48,149 for the purchasing and installation of the shade structure with USA Shade and Fabric Structure. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Good, Gus.
Thank you, Gus. Thank you, Gus. All right. And if I may add, while we're up at Sacramento, the League of Cities, there is a very similar, well, the exact same structure at one of the parks. We passed by it so quick, but it just, it looks really impressive. And I think it's gonna be a different asset now to the park, to the community. And, you know, the shade, we gotta protect it. And then good job on that grant, too. So thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Hey, do we have motion for the approval of item number fifteen? Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Noe. Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Yeah, we have a status update of capital improvements projects. I'd like to call upon Public Works Director, Noe Negrete.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. I warned you, this is gonna be longer than the last time I was here. So at the last time, we came and talked about our completed projects. It was a question made by the council to periodically bring this item back so you can get a flavor of what the projects that we're currently working on. So I'm here to walk through each project. If you have a question, stop me. We're gonna go through the projects that are in construction as well as those that are in design. And at the end, we'll show you the projects that have been completed to date this year. So there's two slides here. The first slide shows you the first four projects that are in construction. The one you're probably most familiar with is outside here, the Town Center Plaza Parking Lot Improvements. We're probably about 90% done out there. They just finished the slurry ceiling. When I do my executive team report, you'll see some pictures of the progress. The main components that are left are the striping. The striping will be done next week. There is a delay in the lighting coming in for the parking lot. So we're working with the contractor to try to get an E T A when that's coming, as well as there's a delay on the main entrance sign that says, you know, "Welcome to City Centerface Springs" at the monument sign. Those are COVID-related in terms of trying to get those materials. We're targeting an opening in early November. As soon as we get a better target on when those materials are coming, then we'll be able to share that information and when we'll be reopening that parking lot. Second project is the Heritage Park Training Exhibit Improvements. This one here is for the painting of the engine in the caboose. We did the authorization to advertise at the last meeting. Our bid opening is scheduled for November 17th on this project. Third project is the Little Lake Park Bus Stop Improvements. We're actually slated to be, to be done this week. That's in front of Little Lake Park across the street from St. Pius Church. Fourth project on this one is the new cabinets at the Centerface Springs Park Recreation Building. And we've had a kickoff meeting with the contractor. We've awarded a contract to him. They've taken measurements, and they're fabricating the cabinets, and they're looking to be completed in the middle of November.
A question?
Yes.
On the first project, I noticed right here on the, along the wall where your guys' offices are at, there's three trees, or four trees, three trees, but one of them looks different.
One is a different species. So in that area, there was a wider opening in the, from the walkway to the parking lot. It was actually a wider landscaped area. So we were looking for a tree that had more filling in the canopy to fill that area, so it wouldn't look so bare. That tree is the same as the two trees that are on the entrance to the main parking lot as well. Those same tree species are.
Yeah, because I didn't see it as it being uniformed. So I just thought, why not?
Good eye. Good eye. We can't get that by you. Good eye.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know it's a tree, but for, yeah, for me, I was like, I even came in. I even asked, you know, saying, hey, why is that tree different than the others?
That's a good eye. That's the reason why. The area was wider, and we felt that if we kept the same uniform, that it was gonna look too bare in that area. But when we're ready to do our punch list, give me your number, and we'll have you come out with us.
Believe me, I'll do quality control. You know I will.
Good, good question.
Thank you.
And if you come, any questions, feel free to stop me here.
No, I just wanted to mention to council, we are gonna have a grand opening of that facility. And we're looking like at doing it at the first meeting of December in between the general session and of the meeting. So that's our plan. And I know we had, you know, some issues with the lighting. We want to make sure everything's complete before we have the grand opening. So we're waiting for everything to be done. So we're expecting that to be done by the beginning of December.
Thanks, Ray. All right, let's go to the next slide. So the next five projects that are in construction or going to be in construction, we just talked about the Fitness Court. So we got the approval today to go forward now with those awards and contracts for the concrete slab for the shade structure. And you previously already approved the purchasing of the equipment there. So we're looking at starting that before the year end is to get that concrete slab poured. Next project, the Great Separation Project over at Rosecrantz and Marcourt. We're not the lead, but we were the lead to do utility relocations. Those are ongoing. We've moved our water line. Our traffic signal and lighting conduits have been moved. We're working with Charter, Frontier, and Edison. They're currently moving their lines. An update on that is the project went out to bid. The bids were opened last week, and the low bidder came in at just under $49 million. So Metro is evaluating those bids. They're hopeful to award the contract best-case scenario before the end of this year. So we're looking at hopefully starting construction, just depending on how fast I do paperwork over there, April or May of next year. Then we have the I-5 Freeway, the Valley View Segment. We're currently working with Caltrans. I'm wrapping that up. They're looking at sometime next year, toward the end of next year, of finalizing that. Then the next project after that is the Valley View Rosecrantz Intersection Improvement Project. That came before you, or we anticipate bringing that to the next meeting for the award of contract. So we did receive bids last week. We're evaluating those bids, and we're gonna bring that before you in November, hopefully starting the construction the beginning of January. And then our last project in construction right now is the Florence Underpass Storm Grain Pump. Again, we've been waiting for the pump to come. It'll take several months, about nine months, to get the pump. We're looking at getting the pump hopefully before the year end and starting the installation at the beginning of next year. That is nine projects that are currently in construction right now. Okay, let's go to the next one. So you have to have design behind that so that these are gonna be the next projects coming online. So the first one is two parking lot, additional parking spaces at Little Lake Park and at Centerface Springs Park. Those are in design. We awarded a contract in June of this year. We're looking to hopefully complete that design at the beginning of next year. And then we were gonna coordinate with Parks and Rec staff as to when would be a good time to do construction. We haven't had a conversation, but I'm recommending not to do it in the middle of the summer as that's when our parks are the most used. So probably after the summer, we'd like to probably start doing that construction. The Heritage Park Training Exhibit, so we talked about the caboose and the locomotive already being on the docket. We're looking at doing the middle boxcar, which has the art piece on there. We're looking to try to go out to authorization to advertise next month, bring that before you for the authorization to advertise. Then we have the Native American Pond. Basically, the liner is compromised, and it has been leaking. And we're looking at trying to bring that before the end of the year in December for an authorization to advertise as well. For the Snake Fountain, we're continuing to work with the designer at looking at different alternatives. We really haven't gotten one that we're really comfortable yet to bring back to the Heritage Arts Advisory Committee, but we're working with them on that. The next two are more regional projects. We're not, we're not the lead on, but we do review the design as their impacts to our city. It's basically the Gold Line Extension, which goes down Washington Boulevard and the High-Speed Rail Project as well. Those are projects that we continue to receive plans to review on. And lastly, this project was awarded for the design at our last meeting. That was for street improvements on Pioneer Boulevard from Charlesworth to Los Nietos. Okay, that's the first slide of design. This is the next one. Only two of these here. So the next one is, we're in design. We, I told you about the Valley View Rosecrantz. We're also doing Valley View Alondra. This one here, we're currently trying to get the right-of-way. So we're going through the legal process on that. We're hopeful that we're able to get the right-of-way by the end of this year and that we would finalize the design shortly thereafter. And our goal is to be in construction at the end of next year on that intersection. We're also designing improvements on the Jazlin Drainage Improvements as well as, we've talked about the next one at length, is the L E D conversion. So we are taking a look at the different phases there. We're also looking at the different funding sources, which I'll come back to. And then the Water Well Number Two Treatment, we did do an assessment. All the fieldwork has been done. All the labs, samples have been taken, and we're currently awaiting that consultant to give us back the report. And we're expecting to finish that this November that will tell us what our next steps are for that water well. This is, this is always a fluid list. As you well know, it's always evolving. And letting you know that we're working on three other projects here that we're looking at securing funding with the help of Gus and the Parks and Rec staff. So we're hopefully gonna bring these to you in November. At the latest, it'll be in December. But we're looking at three new projects, which would be a Los Nietos Park Playground Improvement Project, basically removing the existing playground equipment and replacing it and replacing with all-new surfacing. Looking at Clark Estate Carpet Improvement Project, which would be a carpeting, painting, and I think flooring as well. And then the Betty Wilson Center, again, is flooring and painting there. And those are all, will be grant-funded. We're working with the various funding agencies to get that approval before we bring it to you for your approval. So we just covered nine projects that are in construction, 12 projects here in design, so 21 that are currently active. And just going back on what we've done for this past year, you see we've done seven projects. I tell you where our sweet spot is, about eight to 12. We're probably on pace for closer to 12 this year to be done by the end of this year. And you can see the ones we've done, the Aquatic Center Roof, the Gus Velasco Playground Removal, and also the landscape restoration, which if you've driven by there, the grass is really growing over there, taking really well, transforming that whole area back to how it used to be. We had the bridge lighting upgrade, the horseshoe pit project, the interior extra park painting project at the parks, and then we had the freeway widening on Florence. That concludes my report. I did want to give you a heads up is that we are in the midst of our C I P assessment. We met with the C I P Subcommittee. We are in the midst of reviewing about 150 projects that we received from all the departments. Total, if we had, you know, Money Tree, the total projects, total amount is $175 million, which I'll tell you we don't have. We are gonna have a study session. So City Manager's Office will be contacting you. We're looking at trying to have that at the second meeting in November. I'm gonna try to get it done in an hour and a half. But something to consider is maybe we don't do it the same day as the council because that's gonna be a long day for you. So it's just something for you to consider. Maybe we do a two-hour on a separate day so that we're not rushed. It's a lot of information. I'm not expecting you to vote on that day. Our goal is to give you all the projects and for you to give us some initial feedback. And then we would give you all that information to digest, and then we would have a follow-up study session where you're able to give us some direction. And mind you, we set aside $3 million a year for our C I P. We average anywhere between $5 to $7 million a year, depending on the year. And we're probably gonna advocate that you set aside a three-year C I P somewhere in the range between 12 and 15 million dollars. So that's a little bit of a preview. If you have questions on that, please call me. But again, City Manager's Office will be trying to schedule that study session for November. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Noe. Call upon City Manager, Ray Cruz.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I want to welcome Detective Sergeant Escobedo. He's out of our Centerface Springs Police Service Center. He's here to, in place of Captain Ruiz, who was just at the very exciting Dodger game today that they won 6 to 5. And interesting note, our captain was a former Dodger bat boy, so he has a lot of ties to Dodgers. And I guess his brother was also. But also putting the council on notice, my wife and I are going to the game tomorrow. So I'm gonna be leaving early from work, so just letting you be aware of that. So I hope it's gonna be just exciting, this today's game. Also, is he? Oh, he's in, he's in trouble. Well, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services, it's his birthday. There he is. Is he here? Or he's not here? We're gonna wish him a happy birthday, but if he's not here, I guess we can't sing it for him. All right. Well, we're gonna have to move on. But happy birthday to Travis. But we'll move on to our next speaker, Director of Public Works, Noe Negrete. Wait, wait, wait. Here he is. We gotta wish Travis a happy birthday. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Travis. Happy birthday to you. Knowing Travis, he probably knew that, and he was hiding, but happy birthday, Travis. So now we'll bring up Director of Public Works, Noe Negrete.
Actually, you have his whole group outside, too, you know? Travis's group.
I have a presentation here to show you some of the progress on the Town Center Plaza Parking Lot Improvements. Just one thing I do want to report on, the project's not done. But one of the things I'm happy to report on that's actually completed is we had a lot of complaints from people, pedestrians and drivers of vehicles as you're leaving City Hall making that right turn onto Telegraph from Alberta. Because it's an offset intersection, that crosswalk was about 30, 40 feet away. And most people, as they drive, they're looking left before they make a right. And as they would make a right, they would sometimes fail to see people in the crosswalk. So we got a lot of complaints on that. We've actually fixed that already, even though the project's not done. We realigned the ramp, so it comes at more of a little bit of a diagonal. I was actually out there today to look at it. And if you didn't know that was changed, you would think it's always been that way. So it gives people, as they're driving, making that right turn, they can see now in the peripheral vision those people in the crosswalk now to hopefully eliminate that problem where they had the conflict between the pads and the vehicles. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Noe. I don't think those pictures do the project justice. It looks really nice out there. And a lot of compliments from people who haven't been to City Hall recently said, "Oh, great." Director of Planning, Wayne Morale, I'd like to bring him up.
Thank you, everyone. Just real quickly, Jeff, next slide, please. I thought it was interesting that we had the study session on organic waste. And I just want to bring everyone's attention to universal waste system. So this, there's a MUF, a Material Recovery Facility at this building. So that's where all the recyclables are collected. From there, it's bailed and placed in this building for storage. And then this is a transfer station. When this was first, when before the Planning Commission, there was a lot of opposition. People came to to the meetings with sign, etc. It was appealed to the City Council. But thankfully, both the Planning Commission and City Council had the foresight to approve this project. And none of the issues relative to to safety, vectors, smell, etc., have materialized. And equally important, the City Council had the foresight to require that we do a whole ski agreement. And with that whole ski agreement, we get a certain amount of revenue per tonnage. So Mary Bell, Mary Bell Garcia and I have been working with UWS. And what will be coming before you at a future date is that they want to modify the daily tonnage limit from fifteen hundred tons per day to ten thousand five hundred tons per week. Essentially, what that will do is generate more revenues for the city. And if there's a concern about the impact, this was already analyzed through the environmental document. We looked at the worst case scenario. So that will be good for the city. And they also want to change the hours of operation. But more importantly, as it pertains to what Mary Bell and the consultant spoke about earlier today. Is that they want to, at the transfer station, sort organic material. At the time that this first came before both the Planning Commission and the City Council, there was a proposal for organic waste recovery, because they had anticipated that this date will come. But because of all of the opposition, they decided to not do it at the time. But they will be coming before you at a later date to collect organic material from that particular location as part of the the mix stream. They're currently all in the process with Cal Recycle for that administrative change. But I just want to bring this to your attention. I thought it was very coincidental that here we had this presentation and that they intend to do just that. I do have one other item, and I will call upon my Assistant Planning Manager, excuse me, Assistant Planning Director to give the presentation. So Kwong, thank you.
Good evening. I do have just two brief announcements. The first announcement is in regards to upcoming activities related to the general plan. We actually had a very successful study session yesterday with the Planning Commission. And we have three more upcoming activities planned. On Thursday, a study session with the Traffic Commission at six PM. Followed by a study session with before the City Council on November the second at five PM. And lastly, a community workshop that will be in person, open house style on November seventeenth at five PM. Yes. So aside from announcing it here, you will notice that it has been provided on social media. As well as shared with interested parties that has asked for updates on general plan activities. Lastly, in addition to that, we do have a designated general plan website. Just wanted to let you guys know that, as well as the public information regarding said meetings, as well as any documents and and notes from previous meetings can be obtained through the general plan website. And one last thing is in regards to National Community Planning Month. As you know, the Planning Department in the recent years has had a photo contest. This will be our fourth annual photo contest. What's unique this year is we will have three separate categories. Just to try to get interest and submittals from various age groups. So the first category is the youth group, which will be anyone up to age twelve. Followed by the teens group, which is anyone from thirteen to seventeen years of age. And the adults category. And the winner in each category will receive a one hundred dollar cash prize. As well as will be recognized in a future City Council meeting. And this is available to anyone who either lives, works, or studies in Santa Fe Springs. That concludes my report.
Kwong, Kwong, do you think we could have a photo contest for our department heads? See who can take the best photo?
We can certainly consider that next year.
We could judge you guys. Also, just to make a clarification. So UWS is looking to do fifteen, so they do fifteen hundred a day, they're looking to do ten thousand five hundred a week. So what I'm interpreting there is that they're probably looking to be busier. Maybe on other days, maybe that's why they're trying to do it as a weekly thing instead of a daily thing. All right. So it's just logical, because they're ten thousand five hundred times seven, I mean, well, fifteen hundred times seven is still ten thousand five hundred. So I mean, I just wanted to make sure I clarified to understand it correctly. All right, thank you.
Is that any report? Thank you. I'd like to bring up Dino Torres, Director of Police Services.
Good evening, City Council. I have two brief reports for you. The next one, please. The first is that Police Services, including the Whittier Police Department, always enjoys reaching out to the community and working with other departments on events. Most, if not all, events are put on by Community Services, and we're always happy to support. On October sixth, we interacted with children in our community as part of the Walk to School Event. Here are a few pictures of our policing team in action. I know that Maricela probably has a report, so I'll leave it brief and stop there. Next slide, please. Secondly, the Department of Police Services invites the community to trick or treat at the Police Services Center in celebration of Halloween and Red Ribbon Week. We'll have special trick or treat bags and Red Ribbon Week goodies for all the goblins who visit us between October twenty fifth through the twenty eighth, normal business hours, seven thirty AM to five thirty. And since our next council meeting is in November, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Halloween and safe Halloween. And then lastly, another important note about Sergeant Escobedo. He's been with us his entire career, which is probably a little more than twenty six years. Most of it, the bulk of it, has been with with us in Santa Fe Springs through through Field Patrol, out there as a sergeant. And now at the Police Services Center in charge of the detectives that we have. So we welcome him, and he's always here. I know all of you know him. And he's always very pleasant to talk to and has a lot of information. So thank you very much.
Dino, I can bring up Ben Hayward, our Fire Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's good to see everybody. I was at a chief's conference last City Council meeting. Thanks, Chief Van Meter, for stepping in for me and providing the information that needed to be there. I was with the other twenty eight LA area chiefs and our battalion chiefs over the course of a couple of days, solving the world's problems within the region. Talking about grant funding, mental health, and a lot of other vital information to the area. I've been in Glendale for a couple of days this week, working over the new grant funds. And so we're fighting for the city for all the stuff that we usually get for our hazmat and urban search and rescue teams. So I'll have a report for that here in the next couple of weeks as to what's awarded to the department. We're winding up the month of October with Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We're being received very well in the community and just advising everybody to stay healthy, make healthy choices, and take care of each other. First slide, please. Since I'd been gone for a month, I decided I'd give a thirty day update on where the numbers are within the county of Los Angeles. Thirty days ago, our COVID positivity rate within the entire county was at one point seven three percent. Today, our average daily rate for COVID positivity testing is at zero point eight five percent. And those are people who actually have symptoms, feel symptoms, and are tested. So that's a really encouraging sign to be well below one percent at this point. The hospital rate average thirty days ago was at a thousand and seventy, which was very good. It's much, much better today. Again, this is the entire region of Los Angeles County, all the hospitals. Six hundred and thirty eight people are there for treatment related to COVID. Thirty days ago, the seven day average was five deaths. Today, we're down to four. And specifically within the city of Santa Fe Springs over the last thirty days. We've had another additional seventy five residents test positive for COVID. And two additional COVID related deaths for a total of forty eight during this entire period. Next slide. October ninth was our open house modified, just not in the station itself, but outside for our apparatus presentation. We figured, finished up Fire Prevention Week. And decided to show off a lot of our apparatus and ordered four hundred hot dogs and chips and sodas. And unfortunately, I think due to just everything being closed over the last year and a half. The attendance wasn't quite where it needed to be, but everybody that was there was very impressed with the equipment. Our guys were working hard, and we actually had to step on library services, I think, had an event at two o'clock, and as kids were heading towards that. Our guys were yelling at them across the parking lot, hey, you guys want free hot dogs? And so we got a little bit of activity there. Sorry about the holding up library services for a little bit. But it was a very good, good event, and we look forward to a full blown event next year. Last slide, I just wanted to bring you up to speed. Operational Area E is made up of Santa Fe Springs, Downey, La Haber Heights, Montebello, and the city of Compton. For years, the city of Vernon and Santa Fe Springs have had a joint hazmat team. Where they provide backup for us, we provide backup for them. It's things that are required by OSHA standards to have these backup teams and whatnot. When the city of Vernon went to the county of Los Angeles, we lost that team. And so over the course of the last year and a half, we've developed memorandum of understanding or an MOU with the city of Long Beach. Long Beach has been a great partner with the city of Santa Fe Springs. In fact, when their department decided that they wanted to start a hazmat team, they did all of their training in our facilities with us. And so we're proud to be working with the city of Long Beach at this point. As you can see with the port being there, they have a lot of potential. There's a lot of potential within that city. And so we have reciprocal agreements, and we're actively training with the city of Long Beach at this time. I just wanted to bring up that over the course of the next three days, we're doing some larger joint training with them. Just to make sure that we're all in sync, and that seems to be going very, very well at this point. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Now I'd like to bring up the birthday boy, Travis Hickey, Director of Finance.
Good evening. Again, as I mentioned earlier, I was gonna bring a little more information regarding the city's unfunded liability. Earlier, the council approved six million dollars set aside to our unfunded liability reserve. We already have ten million set aside, and so we ran some scenarios showing if we our intention is to apply that sixteen million dollars towards our unfunded liability. We need to work with the PERS actuaries to do it, because although we talk as a single number, it's a little more complicated than that. But a PERS has a tool which allows us to see the effect of making that extra contribution. This graph comes from the PERS website using that tool. So the first slide is for our miscellaneous plan, which is our non-fire. I can see that that first spot there are unfunded liability. This is as of June thirtieth twenty. This is the most recent figures. They're always about a year behind. These figures just came out. We're at just under eighty four million in unfunded liability for our miscellaneous employees. Between both of our miscellaneous and safety, it was an increase of about eight million dollars for June thirtieth, twenty twenty. That although the PERS fund made money, four point seven percent, it fell short of the seven percent. So it did add to our liability. So at any rate, that's where we start. You can see that the line on the bottom is is the reduction in our balance. We would see if we apply ten million of the sixteen million towards miscellaneous plan. If we could go to the next slide. I got it. I'm sorry. We're both doing it. Our safety plan graph kind of looks the same. You know, estimating maybe six million of the sixteen million applied to our safety plan. In both cases, we see just numerous benefits to doing this. I mean, overall, investing sixteen million, we project it's gonna save forty four million over the next twenty years. We're gonna see an eight percent average reduction in our contribution rates. Our funded status will go up about five percent per year, including getting to seventy percent funded four years earlier than if we don't do anything. So seventy percent funded is kind of where we need to be. Below that is is not good. We're about sixty five percent with our safety plan and and fifty five percent for our miscellaneous plan. So so just again, a big issue facing us, but this this, the money that the council has approved tonight and in the past is gonna go a long way to to getting us back on the road to recovery with that. So that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that ends our executive team reports. Oh, I'm sorry. Joe Angel wanted to end early.
Great job, Maricela.
I'm sorry. Maricela Badet is Director of Community Services. That Laker game, I don't know.
He's still thinking about the Dodgers.
Yeah. So Dino touched a little bit upon the Walk to School Day that took place on October the sixth. We have five elementary schools from both Phil Lake School District and Los Nito School District that participated in this year's event.
The Walk to School Day, it's a global event, and it's participated by over forty countries around the world. I want to thank Mayor Mora, Mayor Protem Rodriguez, and Council Member Trujillo for their participation in this event. I also want to thank Police Services, both in Norwalk and Santa Fe Springs, the Whittier Police Department, and all the schools and the staff that helped support this event. Here's a short video. Here's a short video. This is one of my favorite events. It keeps our kids active and exercising, so it's nice to see them out. On Friday, October the 29th, at 3:30, kids 5 to 12 are going to be invited to display their scary creativity and carving their pumpkins at any of our city parks. The carving tools and the will be provided to them at no cost. And the pumpkins are going to be available for $5 each. And the participants can register online or in person or at Town Center. And then our in-person Halloween carnival will be making its return this year on Sunday, October 31st, at Los Niñepo Park. The event will feature several game booths, food vendors, a photo booth, and activities for the kids. Unfortunately, we've been unable to secure a maze, but we're going to have lots of inflatable obstacle courses and a rock climbing wall. The custom parade is going to start at 6:00 p.m. Registration is not required for this event. At 7:00 p.m., the carnival is going to kick off a live 45-minute performance from a world-renowned magician, Mark Pascal, who's performed a dozen of times for Fortune 500 companies around the world. So for more information, we encourage the community to visit the city's website at sfshalloween.org. This past Saturday, the Dia de los Muertos event took place over at Heritage Park. We had over 1,200 guests who attended the event. It included a variety of food vendors, sugar skull, crafts for kids, artisan items for sale, and a community of Ferenda or altar showcase. The live entertainment consisted of several dance groups as well as performance by the mariachi divas. Again, want to thank Mayor Protem Anet Rodriguez and Councilmember Joe Angel Zamora, who were in attendance and they welcomed and greeted our community. The traditional holiday event, it continues to grow in popularity and we anticipate that it will continue to grow in the coming years. Here's a short video to recap the event. The next item I wanted to talk about was just in partnership with the Elena Medical Imaging, the Community Services Department, we offered a free mobile breast cancer screening at the Gasolosque Neighborhood Center on Friday, October 1st. We had approximately 20 women that participated in the screening. And during the visit, the Abigail Barazza Foundation, they provided each of our participants a goodie bag. And then our local Starbucks donated iced tea for the participants. The Department of Community Services, also in partnership with the Department of Public Health, held a free flu vaccination clinic on October the 13th. Public Health administered 66 flu vaccines to a mixture of children, teens, adults, and seniors. And Community Services is going to continue to work with Public Health to schedule future flu clinics at the Gasolosque Neighborhood Center. And then lastly, on October the 9th, the library hosted its first post-COVID in-person special event. They had a magician, Dave Scale. He performed a Halloween-themed magical show. And we had an attendance of over 120 parents and children. And the parents expressed to our staff that they were so happy to have real in-person programming again. So that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Maricela. Now that ends the report there.
Right. Thank you, everybody. Okay, appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Trujillo. Councilmembers Zamora.
None this time, sir.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
And I have none. Council comments. Councilmember Trujillo.
And happy birthday, Travis. I don't see, did he leave already? Oh, there you go. Happy birthday again, Travis. Thanks for being here. Such great programs that we have. I mean, I didn't attend the Dia de los Muertos, but it was an awesome event. Thank you again to the staff on that. I'm getting a lot of great positive feedback on the media. So I know Raylene's on it and Mary Bell, and I think Amy on it too. Thank you so much. It's made a big difference. So thank you for that, too. Just, I really don't have much today. I just have a request on if it's possible. Maybe knowing, you know how on the bridge, we do it for pink for breast cancer? And I know we're doing it red for Red Ribbon. Is there any way like maybe we can do something? I don't know if it's the right time or not, but I know every month there is a different type of cancer. And I know our main thing is breast cancer. Maybe we can do something on a monthly. I mean, is there something like a button or something? Or maybe we can look into it, maybe changing it? Or special events like when we have like Blue Light, you know, the police week, we can change it to the blue or Red Ribbon red. And but throughout the months, like, you know how there's breast cancer, there's ovarian cancer, there's prostate, everything like that. Can we look into something like that?
Yeah, for sure. What we could do is propose some different colors based on the different months. And we can work with the city manager's office to disseminate that to the council and get your feedback on.
Thank you, thank you.
And it was, we're looking at different suggestions Councilman Zamora was asking about if the Dodgers make the World Series with a blue. But I think for the different cancers, different colors, with the beauty of that LED, we can do different colors for different things. So we'll take suggestions from all the electeds about that.
Actually, they even could do like Fiesta Spatas or the colors of Mexico, even for Fourth of July, like for the whole month. We could do red, white. But yeah, they actually, it's all set up. It's actually.
Yeah, something like that.
It's, if you see the thing, believe me, they can walk you through a whole, they're actually enjoying it themselves. Talk to Abel.
We'll be pursuing those.
And we won't be seeing each other till November, so happy Halloween and we'll see everybody at the carnival then. Thank you so much.
Councilmembers Zamora.
Also, I just want to thank the staff, you know, Travis, happy birthday, like Juanita said. You know, keep, keep getting younger on us, so thank you for that. You look great. So other than that, just the staff, thank you for all that you do. You know, the efforts that you guys put in. We know the department starts with the, you know, department heads. And of course, we have our lower-level staff that, you know, put in all that effort. So I make sure you guys thank them on our behalf and, you know, just express, you know, how happy we are with with the just the different things that we keep hearing from the community. You know, it takes a community to work together. Together, we can make a difference. And I know that, you know, community was speaking out over the Dollar Tree. I know the Dollar Tree was not in our city, but it's something that, you know, a lot of people spoke up on. And that's the thing they have to realize. It's not just us speaking up as council members, but it's them themselves, you know, making the phone calls, whether it be to, you know, Janice Hans's office and contacting Ivan Solik, you know. There's also LASSA. There's also a homeless task force that, you know, through the sheriffs. So there's so many different entities that had to work together. And then, of course, the business itself has to want to do it. And sometimes people don't realize that we can't do anything if the business doesn't want to do it themselves because that's private property. And in this case, I think the Dollar Tree finally got fed up of what was going on. And then they actually looked into it. I know that something, you know, that has to do with their corporation. Of course, they have different views, so it made it a lot more difficult. But I'm glad that there was a major cleanup and I'm glad that the city, not only Santa Fe Springs, but, you know, the unincorporated part of Whittier worked together to actually clean up that part. And I know that a lot of staff, you know, residents were calling in. So that was a great thing to see on that project. So once again, thank you. You know that this month is, you know, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So for those of you who have loved ones who have not gotten checked out, make sure you remind them to get checked out and, you know, do your part to spread the word. And that's why we wear the color pink. And of course, Red Ribbon Parade, I mean, that's something that I know we're not going to have this year. But the fact that we can still express what it is to our little ones, why, you know, they wear the color red. It's not only for in celebration of the Los Angeles Angels, but it's also because of, you know, Tige Camarena, you know, sacrifice that he made and actually, you know, bringing drug awareness to, you know, what it is now. So, you know, the fact is just making sure you guys talk to each other. And of course, we all know that the Dodgers won today, so you guys look a little happier. I'm glad to see that everybody was in here focused on our meeting, not just watching their phones. I'm just kidding. No, but either way, thank you guys for coming out. And once again, I know that Dodger blue is out there and it actually does a great thing for our community. Why? Because, I mean, you have a lot of vendors, different people actually having the chance to not only spread love, make money. And, you know, that's the great thing when you have, you know, a possible championship in the city of LA or city, you know, in our neighboring city. So either way, you guys take care and God bless.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Chairs are heavy. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say to Maricela, the thank you to all the staff for the Walk to School Day. It was so much fun. Thank you to our officers and every, all the staff that participated. It was just an amazing feeling to be around all the youth and they were so happy to walk. It was a cool event. It was my first time to do that, so I was really happy. And Dia de los Muertos, that was an amazing event. All the dancers that everybody provided, the staff, the coordination was just so successful. And it brought in a variety of people from young, old. I mean, I've seen kids running, playing, the vendors. It was just an amazing event. We even had our council member, Joe Angel Zamora, working one of the booths. I think it was the vector booth. I didn't know if I had to work. He didn't tell me, so I just walked away. I wanted to say happy birthday, Travis. I know that everybody's saying it. And is today actually your birthday? Okay, okay. Have a great evening. What are you doing here?
We bought you Chick-fil-A.
Yes, we bought you Chick-fil-A. Congratulations, Sergeant Escobedo, so for protecting us for all these years. That's a long time to be in one city and we're so happy to have you here. Thank you. I wanted to also thank the chamber. I had to go to a JPIA in San Diego for a meeting. So I came back and went to the chamber mentoring at golf and stuff. And I was able to spend time with my mentee. And it was, like I said, the kids, the kids are everything. They're our future. And it was a very nice event and I look forward to the next one. I wanted to thank the Barazza Foundation for everything that they have done for our community to make cancer awareness. And I think that's all except for if I don't see you, which I probably will at the park for our festivities in Halloween. I want you to have a, wish you a happy Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, I think they wrapped it all up. But so like always, you know, thank you to all the staff for doing, keeping our city moving forward. I don't think Mary Bell is here, but it was a great presentation, you know, regarding the recyclables. And, you know, we just got to be in compliance, move forward, and even do the right thing for our environment. Again, Sergeant Escobedo, thanks so much for all that you do. Staff, thank you everybody for wearing pink. Happy birthday, Travis. Walking to school was, was great. Longest walk I took in a very long time and I think I should do it more often. But it's a little bit of a long meeting. Thank you all for wearing pink also. Appreciate you being here and have a good evening. Thank you so much. Oh, and before we close, I'm sorry, I do want to close the meeting in honor of a longtime resident, John Griggs. We are adjourned.